The board will now reconvene at open meeting. May I have a certification of the closed meeting?
While that superintendent school board has convened a closed meeting on this date pursuant to the permanent director vote and in accordance with provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Innovation Act, and where as section two point one dash thirty seven seventy one D of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by the school board that such closed meeting was conducted informally with Virginia law. Now therefore be resolved that the actual high school board hereby certifies that to the best of these members' knowledge, one, only public business matters lawfully exempted from public meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed, and two, only such public business matters as were identified in the motion by which the closed meeting was convened were heard, discussed, or considered.
Second. Motion is second to certify the closed meeting. Go ahead. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Um, will the clerk call, roll call please?
Mrs. Taylor.
Present.
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 Here. Here.
Here.
Here.
Present.
Present.
Here.
And I think we've been able to make contact with Ms. Handy. So Ms. Handy, um, I believe the rules say that you have to tell us why it is you must attend remotely for the record.
Yes ma'am. Um, Madam Chair, I am actually participating. I am one of the facilitators at a national convention which is being held in Philadelphia. It started this morning. I will not be returning at a required a right, so that's why I'm not there. However, I did want my name to be recorded that I did attend the meeting, so I'm requesting remote access.
Okay, thank you Ms. Handy. Um, will now stand for the pledge.
Our pledge is allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Is there, um, a motion to approve the minutes from last meeting?
Madam Chair, I move that we wait and approve the meeting minutes for O two of four twenty five, next meeting. Um, I did not get a chance to say something to the clerk regarding the closed session of purpose that needs to be exactly stated in the minutes.
So the, the reason for the closed meeting has not been recorded correctly?
Correct.
So we can fix that and vote on it at the next meeting. Thank you for catching that, Mr. Taylor. Is there a motion on the long-term suspensions?
Madam Chair, I move that we approve the long-term suspensions as, um, recommended by the superintendent for cases O two eighteen twenty five O one through O six. Second.
There's a motion in second to approve the suspensions and the expulsions as recommended. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Is there a motion for the termination?
Madam Chair, I move that the school board uphold the hearing officer's recommendation, terminate the employment of the teacher in personnel case O two eighteen twenty five O seven, I don't give me the week. Second.
There's a motion in second to move forward with the termination. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Did Ms. Handy move? Question? Affirmative.
Aye.
Thank you. Is there a motion on the GED list?
Madam Chair, I move that we approve the GED list as presented. Second.
Motion is second for the GED list. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Is there a motion for the vouchers?
Madam Chair, I move that we approve the vouchers as presented. Second.
Thank you. There is a motion in second to approve vouchers. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, the vouchers, vouchers are approved. Is there a motion for the personnel list?
Madam Chair, I move that we approve personnel list as presented. Second.
Thank you. Motion in second for the personnel list to be approved. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Personnel list is approved. Okay, next up. Yes ma'am.
Expulsion case.
You did it.
Does she correct it again?
Um, thank you then. There is a group of policies for the second reading. Is there anyone like to make a motion for the policies?
Madam Chair, I move that we approve, um, the policies five point O one through five point O seven as presented. Second.
Thank you. There's a motion in second to approve the second reading of these policies. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next up is the, um, our discussion about the budget that was canceled for last week. Anyone like to, um, have any questions? Anybody want to jump in here? Doctor Jack, the next step is tomorrow night. I guess if this goes, if we approve this tonight, tomorrow night against your board of supervisors?
Correct. Uh, that move is, move, meeting is moved next Tuesday, so it won't be for a week.
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir. I would like to make sure a couple things are added. Um, I'd like to make sure we have a, an extra nurse put into the, the budget. Um, as well as a, um, school counselor. Yeah, with Ms. Ferguson's request.
Can I move to go?
Yes, please. I'm suddenly talking.
I'm just trying to make sure because we do have, I don't believe we had a nurse in there, but I do believe we had an extra counselor.
There is an extra.
We did add an extra counselor at, um, Ms. Ferguson's request. It was for Altad, Virgin, Virginia.
Yes.
Home bed. That is in there already. Is that what your request was?
Fine. I just wanted to make sure that that did not get taken out.
Yeah, no, nothing's been taken out. But the nurse, there is not an extra nurse in here.
So can we go ahead and add that?
Yes.
I would like to see that added if it's all possible.
Where would this extra nurse go?
I believe, I, I did reach out to, um, the director and she said that they could float three of the schools that she felt was needed.
We, we do have a floater.
She did say that.
And we, and I, I believe that we have, um, you know, I'm not the director, but I do believe we have two LPNs that assist a full-time nurse at four schools maybe.
Approximately four.
And so, right now, we do have a floater and we do have two LPN, you know, we have a nurse in every clinic plus the floater plus the coordinator. And then we do have two extra LPNs. And she did ask for more in, in her budget, so, I mean, is this what you want, an extra LPN to be a second nurse at a clinic?
Thought that we had two nurses at the schools that had the most fragile children.
We started that this year.
So some schools already have two nurses.
Yes.
Some of the elementary schools already have two.
We have two LPNs. I don't believe they just stay at one school. I believe they go back and forth between two schools. Uh, because she also felt more comfortable, let's say I'm the nurse at McCombe because I'm here and I'm out. If I have a floater that's half the time here and half the time at the other school, then that LPN knows those children and can, and can fill in very well for the, for the nurse. And I'm not trying to speak for Ms. Blair, but we do have two extras as in, in the schools with the most critical needs.
So was that her request? Do we?
No, we started the year with that. And I think she asked for three. So.
That's why I think, can we add the third?
So you're talking about the LPN, the second person? Okay. That just need to clarify because it makes a difference and.
Thank you for clarification, as I'll wait and see if we can add that in person.
Uh, Jeff, I'd like to add something too as well. This one is great. I'd like to add, um, to move the art funds for elementary level from a dollar thirty eight per student to three dollars per student. And also I would like to put in there to pay all school fees, art using, class fees, culinary, et cetera. Let the school, the president of the school board pay for that.
Okay, so I, I did hear about this today. It's like a little, little bit on it. The art fees for the elementary easy, thirty-two hundred dollars. Um, I don't really have data on art, music, culinary because that changes each semester by enrollment that I will look at historical data, but I, I don't have that data. The two that I was able to calculate quickly is driver's ed. Um, we typically at grade level have four hundred kids on a grade level while we don't do, and there's a two hundred dollar fee for behind the wheel. So why, while we don't always teach all students, if it were free, I feel like we would be teaching all students. So that would be approximately eighty thousand dollars. And I asked about the class fees in high school and apparently they're ninth grade, ten, twenty, thirty, forty, so that adds to a hundred. So that would be approximately forty thousand. So I have those, but I'd have to quantify, which I have time because now we have till next Tuesday, but I would have to quantify the middle and high school art, music, and culinary fees.
That's all.
Madam Chair. So to, um, Mr. Webber's suggestions, I'm fine with the first one. With regards to the second one, um, I have some concern because this is first hearing and we've, we've been working the budget process for quite some time. My belief is that there are student fees that we may well want to understand before we send them to ask the county. Specific examples include there are continuing education fees. There are fees for some of our programs like welding as an example, I think. In addition, I think that some of the fees that are, um, we're asking students for are relative to prom, relative to graduation, and the parent teacher organizations, the PTA's, sometimes they're, they're very willing and cooperative. So I'm, I'm concerned about the second one for those reasons. I think that we would need more data. And I'm not opposed to the concept. I think that we might want to be careful what we're asking for for this fiscal year. I'd be very willing to look at it in the, in the future. We've agreed last thought that we're not going to make decisions just like that. If we had heard this earlier, I think that I could understand and, you know, understand the whole context. I've heard along with art, music, culinary, and the student fees, and I don't know what all that entails.
Yes ma'am. Assistant representative. And I bet there's more than, than is looked that we talked about. There's probably other because we don't know about.
So you did touch on welding and I did talk to Ms. Taylor today. So like for welding and cosmetology were the two that we discussed. We did not include that in this because they get a kit that they will take with them into their career. So I know the cosmetology, they get a kit with their, their clippers, their scissors or whatever. The, the welders get the mask, the goggles, whatever. So I didn't include those at front top from Ms. Taylor because they take that with them to start their career. These are the only two that I can address like that.
What are funds for children that can afford these things?
I think there might be PTA funds, but I don't know. My guess is it would vary by school.
That'd be a question for Ms. Taylor if she's not here.
No.
So my, my thing is, is that, you know, these kids, if they don't pay their classroom fees and they can't go to prom, they're being punished not to go to prom because their parents don't have the money. And I don't think that's right. I think it should all be free. To go to prom and all that kind of stuff. So that's why, like I said, it's, it's a lot of data needs to be brought. At least I think a lot of this stuff needs to go away.
Can I, can I make a quick question?
I can speak to student fees because I'm in high school. We pay twenty dollars each year, or you can pay it off the whole. You pay twenty dollars each year, so nine, ten, eleven, twelve, which can't graduate if you don't pay your student fees. You have to pay your student fees to graduate. And you can't go to prom. You can't go to any of like all the extracurricular dances, so like homecoming, all that stuff. You can't go to all the outside events that we have going on that aren't in school other than sports, which you still have to pay if you're typically getting sports. So you can't do prom or graduate until you pay the student fees. So to shed more light on.
Or probably, um, senior dinner. I think she mentioned that one today.
The banquet, I'm not sure if we have to pay fees for. Last year, I'm not sure if this, all the seniors paid their fees to get into the banquet, but I know you have to pay for sure to graduate. And for cosmetology, they personally buy their own kits. So it's like too much.
Madam Chair, this is my second follow-up on, but there's some, I'm trying to walk the protocol like I should. So, I mean, the things that have been brought into the room since I made my first thoughts really seeing this support, my idea, which is, this is a topic that is broad and, and has specifics that I don't, I don't have the data on to be able to, to vote tonight. I appreciate the heart of that second request. But I, there's so much. I'm, I'm just knowing things that I didn't know. I can't make an informed decision on them.
Madam Chair, I just want to ask the super, the student representative, do you agree that the student fees should not be?
I feel they serve a purpose. I think they serve a purpose. A lot of our fees go to our class and we have fundraisers, we have student trips, we have like all of our senior trips. We've already done fundraisers for our senior trips, but some of that money goes to our class and some of the money goes to the school. I'm not specifically sure how like, how each, like how all the money is separated. I'm not sure how that is, but I know a lot of the money does go to our class. So it does eventually hurt us in the end if we don't pay our dues. Because we can't graduate, we can't move on with our life and then some of us, I mean, I think it's very unfortunate that sometimes you can't pay your student dues, but I do think they do serve a purpose in high school.
So what if a kid has no intention of going to prom? Makes it up to pay the fee?
They would still have to pay the fee to graduate. So if they want to graduate out of school, the fee's necessary.
I, I think that's what we need to deal with.
They would still get their diploma. I guess they would maybe not take on graduation. Doctor Jack, did you want to try and?
Yeah, a couple things. And then, um, Mr. Webber's defense, I don't know what an accursed today, like let's just put it out there, let's talk about it. But there's, there's a lot of problems to this and as our student representative mentioned, grade lines, they go like, a lot of, some of these fees are, they're activity funds fees. So they're collected at the school and they're used by the school. According to code, that's how it's supposed to work. Schools that collect fees for like parking, for example, or at the concession stand at a football game for by the boosters is supposed to go into the activity funds fee account and then be spent. It's not, it's not supposed to be savings account. So it, it's almost like we need to separate what are activities funds that schools are collecting and using for things like prom and, and other things versus having a big ten budget and those things like consumables that we are paying for. Art supplies, music supplies, uh, welding supplies, other CTEs, like those things that our kids are actually using and should we pay for those? I can just tell you from my previous school division, the board made the decision to do away with anything related to anything consumable. So that included art, music, CTE, and it included like workbooks that kids write in. Previously they didn't pay for those. They did away with that. So kids didn't pay for anything consumable, they didn't touch anything else. That's just one example of how one school division did it. And it, it seemed to, to work pretty well, but to everyone's point, I think it's going to take some time to kind of delve into what, how many activities do we have which are related to consumables and which are actually school activity funds that the schools rely on to pay for many different things. Like divide them into those three categories and let the board chew on that a little bit. That's just a suggestion.
Well, I don't think, I know that I would request work for the curtains to be replaced some of the schools. Um, I'm not sure if we really need that in the budget. Can we just take that out from our twenty-four million?
That's, that's where it went.
Okay.
The, um, facilities have been given that list that's on the PowerPoint that says one-time purchases and they're verifying the dollar amount and, you know, because some of them are blank because there was a dollar amount, say the concrete around the track at Arcany High School, that was, that was low ball. So, you know, we're, we're verifying the amounts and that has been given to facilities to move forward with one-time money.
Should that come out from the?
Yes, it's not in this operating.
Thank you. And we're not taking anything out yet?
No, no. And I just need to know what to add besides the LPN.
I don't know. I feel as though Dr. Johnson does. I, there's probably other fees that we are not aware of because we don't have the information. And so if we were to approve this, oh, these fees are now, you know, wiped out and gone, they're going to be covered by something else. That feel like at the next meeting, there would be a group of angry people that would come and say, well, you forgot, you didn't, what about this fee? What about this fee? What about this fee?
And, and I'm not, I'm not well aware of these fees because they're all collected and used at the school level. They don't come through our office. So I don't have very much knowledge of them.
But I do, I do, I agree with Dr. Jack. I don't, they're not, nobody's making money off that. These fees were collected to help put on the prom. These fees are collected to help put on graduation. Yes, sir.
Do we have time to get that data together?
Well, we presented the board of supervisors next week.
We, and I'm actually going to have another board meeting because we have to vote on this.
Can I ask you a question on if, if the board decided to, um, that they were going to provide for whichever materials we decide on, if that came out of carryover or carry forward sort of list, would it have to be included as a budget item?
No.
I think so.
But, you know, we tend to use them for one-time purchases.
Right. So that's one solution perhaps is you don't, you may not have to include it in your budget. You can pay for it later once we get, you know exactly what we're paying for and creating. We can pay for it out of, out of carryover for a year and then you can bake it into the budget next year, which may not be such a bad idea because then you get a really good idea of what exactly are we talking about and what are our fees exactly? So that, that, I'm going to go ahead and say that would be a recommendation I would make is let us come back to you with a, a solid, uh, presentation or representation of what those reasons are, how much it will cost. We can pay for them out of your reserve fund, um, for a year and then next year you can make it into your budget.
Oh, we, two other things have come to mind. Where is that, where would that be with the computers? Chromebook, let's say you lost a Chromebook, but we just furnish you another one and another one and another one and also band instruments. Where would that fall with band instruments? Or will you come back?
I think that's a great question from Ms. Homely.
So Chromebooks, do you, well, maybe I should.
That is progress.
It's like trying to hurt cats. You, you know, it's a constant issue with damaged Chromebooks and trying to get the parent or the student to pay the, it, it, it's a constant issue for technology. And so the students are going into the library and checking out a, a Chromebook for the day because they haven't paid for the Chromebook that they destroyed, you know, sometimes for the fifth time or, or whatever. And there can be extreme and there can be valid ones. That is a constant problem that technology grapples with. Um, we provide the case that's supposed to be indestructible, but it, it happens. And, and so then we have schools that say, we need more Chromebooks in the library because we have so many students that have lost theirs, damaged theirs, whatever, haven't paid. And, you know, technology's saying, well, you already have fifty Chromebooks in the library or whatever the case may be, that should be enough. I, I've heard that in principals' meetings. So that is a problem with that. And what was the other one that you said you said? Oh, band instruments. So I believe, let's just take a clarinet. You need a reed. So you had, you bought, a reed is specific to you, you know, because your, your mouth is on it or whatever. I don't think you reuse reeds, but I think we have maybe a fifteen dollar fee if you're allowed to take your band instrument home. If you don't want to take your band instrument home, I don't think they charge you a fee. This could just be one band teacher. But if you destroy a clarinet, you're talking two hundred and fifty dollars, three hundred dollars, whatever, whatever the case may be, and that comes out of the band instructor's allotment and they collected fifteen dollars.
So that, that is.
Band instruments are very expensive.
That's my question. If our, our new rule is no fees, no charge for pay fee, then there is no fee for the broken Chromebook.
And that would not be.
Here's another, here's another Chromebook and another Chromebook.
Yeah, I don't think that would be, I would not recommend that because what is the reason to take here your Chromebook or your instrument?
I'm going, I was going to make a motion.
Okay. Yes ma'am. The Chromebooks, fifty Chromebooks to a library. We have a hundred and forty kids, one forty, a hundred and fifty kids and just my class. I'm not sure about the sophomores, ju, like the juniors, the freshmen. The freshman has quite a large class. Fifty kid, like fifty Chromebooks to one library is truly not enough Chromebooks. It's to the point where some teachers have Chromebooks in their classroom to let students borrow Chromebooks because everybody's Chromebook seemed to break. My Chromebook included has broken. I have a different computer that I use to do most of my schoolwork. It's just the Chromebooks, it's a, it's a little bit of a problem in my opinion.
Madam Chair, I, I move that we accept the superintendent's recommendation to get an IFRS list of all fees and to consider at a future meeting and using reserve funds for one-time coverage of those fees.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries?
Madam Chair, I'd also move on the recommendation from Dr. Jack about the consumables be paid for all the electives. Come back to the other fees at a later date.
Not, not vote on that now, but.
No, add it to the budget for the consumables that he was talking about.
In, in the one time that we're going to present and vague did next year.
Uh, yes.
Are we ready for our vote on the budget?
Madam Chair, I move that we approve the, on your request as amended this evening.
Second. There's a motion in second to move forward with the funding request. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Final answer report is over.
Hi, I believe you have a copy of the report. Are there any questions that I can answer?
Have you heard any word going to the crowd or we'll find? No, we're, we, I mean, we've not heard any definitives. We're definitely getting some, um, I wouldn't call them warnings, but, um, sort of anything can happen. So, uh, we don't obviously have our federal numbers for next year. So we don't obviously have our federal numbers for next year. I think that will be the benchmark is what that looks like. My, my own sense is that it could happen. We don't have those numbers yet, but won't be long.
Oh, this is the approval of the budget which we just did. Is that hard?
Yep.
So you can't support.
I'll, I'll warn you upfront, this teacher, um, teacher retention, teacher shortage. It's a, it's a subject that's sort of near and dear to my heart. But in terms of our survey and sort of our staff, you're going to hear me say, say, I don't know a lot. Mainly because first, the first year you do a survey, the numbers sort of are in there. You don't have any trend data. So any number you see is, as things stand now, that's hard to play. It's good, it's bad, it's indifferent. You don't know if you want to start collecting the trend data. But I think we do have some interesting numbers to share. And, and I think just so you know, I've hit, been having this question a couple of times. Hey, why are you doing this data, excuse me, the survey mid-year? We do an exit, or sorry, the mid-year with people in the school division. I, I understand that and there's value in that. However, those are, those are autopsy photos. Those people have already left. I think it's important to ask people, ask teachers in real time, what's important to you? What's, what are some things you're looking at that might cause you to leave this school division or teaching profession in general? To ask those difficult questions mid-year, particularly in the middle of the budget season. They're important and you, you, you don't often like what you hear in terms of responses, but you got to ask the questions. So with that said, um, this was the, sort of the opening, um, couple of paragraphs to the survey itself. And, um, let me pull up my notes here. Again, I, I wrote something in the newsletter about, you know, knowing which or why is, it's, same holds true, I think, with any survey. You're asking, what you're asking is why? And in this case, why? Why might you leave the school division? Why might you leave teaching in general? What is, what would keep you, why would you stay with the school division? What are those, what factors are most important to you as a teacher? And we got a lot of feedback from staff. We had about 200 staff members, teachers respond, which is, is an ideal. But for the first year of survey, that number will get better. Uh, but there were 26 pages of comments. So teachers have a lot to say. And there's only two questions we asked them relative to, you know, writing in, writing in, providing a narrative, answers to the question. 26 pages, that's a lot of, that's a lot of answers. And they were interesting responses. I'll talk about those in just a minute. One of the questions we asked is about feeling overwhelmed and how often do you feel overwhelmed? Not in school, but outside of school. And about 40% said always and often in terms of feeling overwhelmed outside of school. And that, you know, that comes with teachers taking work home, teachers responding to emails, text messages, et cetera, during their off time. And, um, you know, as I, I've said over the years, teaching is one profession where teachers are the one group of people who go home at night and worry about other people's kids. And our teachers clearly care about these kids. And I know that happens. But they do a lot of work at home and they answer a lot of emails and make a lot of phone calls. And it, it, it can be overwhelming. Uh, do you feel adequately supported by your school administration? This was actually, again, it, you know, it's, it is a one-time snapshot. But, uh, I think you should be happy about this. Almost 80% of our teachers said they do feel adequately supported by their administration. I think that's a good statistic, but what does it mean exactly? Well, you'll, you'll have a better idea when you survey next year. But, um, we always want teachers to feel more supported. So anything we can do to help them feel more supported, we should do. And hopefully that number will, will rise. The, of the 20% who said, no, I don't feel adequately supported by the administration. We asked them to cite the reasons and not surprisingly, the one that jumped to the, to the forefront was student behaviors. Uh, so that, and that's, that is not surprising. That's true. I would say 99.9% of the school divisions on the planet. Uh, when teachers don't feel supported, it's typically because, it's often because, uh, they're dealing with some student behavior issues that they're having troubles with in their function. Uh, this is another positive. I do believe your current teaching environment fosters a positive and supportive learning environment. I'll do the math here real quick, but believe that was about 80%. Let me double check. Yeah, 85%. So 85% of our teachers said that mostly or definitely there is a positive teaching environment in a school. And I think that's a very, very good statistic and something that, that you can be proud of as a school board. And it's, it's, I don't think it's not coincidental that that's not too far from their answers related to being supported by their administrators. So, uh, there's most likely an nexus there between those two questions and those two responses. Uh, this is just a word cloud that Claire Applegate sided with you. I thought it was a great idea. But she's going to be devastated that we got principal, a typo with principal up there. Uh, that, she did a great job with this and wherever you are, Claire, you are fantastic. But that principal is, that's a new, uh, non-phenetics coming for principal. But these are the, these are the responses people gave for, when you have a problem, you're in your classroom, at school, you're stressed, you know, whatever. Who do you go to? These are the, the responses they gave. I thought it was very cool that, um, a lot of people mentioned people's names. Sean O'Shea, uh, Harris, Katie Farrell, um, let's see, Sakura, Ms. Payne, right now, Punti. At Claire Applegate. So I think it's neat when you ask that question, if people are actually giving specific names with individuals, who they go to to get help and feel supported. But those answers were the ones most often given when asked, where do you go to get help? Where do you go to get support? Prayer was in there a lot, which was, I think, kind of neat. Uh, but many people said prayer. So that was pretty cool. On a scale of one to five, one being the worst, five is the Likert scale, how happy are you teaching in the school division? Again, this is just kind of a, I don't know, it's, it's a, I'm E B I C, a snapshot. So between three, three and five is a large percentage of folks who said that. Three being if you're right in the middle, you're lukewarm versus five being extremely happy. We, we would like all those to be fives. So that's really the goal. Is not be satisfied with what that particular graph shows, but be satisfied when every one of those responses is a five. And that should be the goal. Uh, these are just bar, bar graph representations of responses. Now, there was a, there's several different factors that teachers point to, nine total, in terms of why they believe in the teaching profession. Um, and just, and so you know, um, during COVID, we lost about 300,000 teachers nationally, which is roughly the population of the city of Pittsburgh. I like to use that as an example. It's a lot of teachers. The numbers of teachers who are, who are leaving and being replaced, there's a gap of about 110,000 teachers. So the, the supply of teachers keeps going down, the, the demand for teachers keeps going up. But the, the, the supply is, um, is dwindling. In fact, there's a lot of secondaries, not secondary, higher education institutions that are doing away with, um, education, capable of education completely. And part of the reason why is there's no money in it. Uh, there's no, there, there's fewer and fewer kids that want to be education majors for a variety of reasons. Plus for universities, it's not like, uh, you know, your, uh, your pre-law or engineering programs. There's not a lot of money coming from your, um, your graduates. So, uh, all that to say, the, the reasons that are given for why people leave, um, they're all over the board. And if you look at this graph, in our school division, here's what people are saying. Duties outside of teaching, that is a standard response everywhere related to teachers being dissatisfied. Is there given too many things to do that don't have anything to do with teaching? That's very frustrating for teachers. Uh, lack of support from administrators will come in second there, if you look at that, that paragraph holistically. And, uh, for numbers, you should feel very good about the fact that very few folks cited lack of support from you or subpolets, uh, stated that they didn't feel supported by parents. And I thought that was an interesting stat. Very few there. They were more related to administration, administrative support and duties outside of teaching. Uh, and then I'll say, this is the same piece of information, but I just wanted to point out that compensation, of course, jumps right to the top. So if you're looking at thi, this data set, compensation and student behaviors, they're going to be right at the top in terms of, um, the things that are most impactful in terms of teacher satisfaction with what they do. And money comes and jumps right up. And as I wrote the other day, teachers are no, no different than anybody else. They have bills to pay, they have kids to put to college, they have retirement plan for. It's expensive. It's hard to blame any teacher for leaving any school division to go somewhere else to make more money. Uh, because right now, teachers are a hot commodity. And that's, I wrote that in the upcoming newsletter for March. They are. There's a teacher shortage. Teachers are in the driver's seat in terms of employment. They can go practically anywhere. But having said that, go on to the next slide. Actually, this, this is a scat of a recreation of the last slide. Go to the next slide, spread if you don't mind. Um, if you look at our school division, teachers between with 16 years and over 26 years of experience. That's a very high number. It's over 40%. Nearly half, uh, nearly half of 165, no, that's not right data. Nearly half of all those who responded have between 16 and over 26 years of experience. That's a really good statistic. Uh, it tells me that they're staying with you, they're loyal to you, they're loyal to the school division. They're loyal to these kids. You want what's best for these kids. And as I pointed out a few times, they are also, coincidentally, the folks who are most compressed in the pay scale. And, uh, while that's, that's not a great statistic, it really says something about our people. Because we have a lot of veteran teachers here and they are compressed. And if we're able to get this pay scale, um, decompression across the finish line, they're the ones that will benefit the most. And I think that's very appropriate. It's all, it's not only appropriate for them, but it's appropriate for the folks who are at five, six, seven years, who can look down the scale and see that my school division, my school, my school board, they're going to take care of me. They're looking out for me. And that's huge. That's huge for teachers. Uh, so, so I'm just going to finish up with some final tips and takeaways. We only have about 200 teachers participate. We really need to improve that. I know we will. Uh, it's important to keep doing this every year. Maybe not, maybe you don't like this survey. Maybe you want to use a different survey. Uh, whatever you do, try to do it year to year so you're collecting some trend data. So the numbers really mean something in terms of how much you want improvement. Because right now, you, there's no way to measure that. Uh, I mentioned the, the 80% of teachers who felt they were supported by administration is very good. Those who do not feel supported, point to student behaviors. Compensation, student behaviors outpacing all other factors in terms of enhancing teacher satisfaction. Teachers clearly feel supported by their parents and their school board members. And 83% of teachers indicated a positive learning environment. That's very good, very good news. And then at the bottom, there are 26 pages of comments. Uh, we went through them painstakingly the other day. It was interesting though, Claire did some, uh, calculating and the, the comments, the top two comment areas were compensation and curriculum slash professional development. In other words, when they were asked to make comments, it talked mostly about the need for making more money. You need to be compensated fairly and the need for more curricular PD support. I thought that was fantastic. Okay, that, that differs slightly from the Likert scale responses, which was more about student behaviors and compensation. But the comments tended to be more about compensation and curriculum PD support. And there are many positive comments and which they're all, of course, they're always good to read part of their comments. But a lot of comments about the building principles, I think were blessed with good building principles. Many teachers recognized that and talked about it. So finally, recommendation, uh, if the teacher compensation proposal is approved, just respectfully, don't let it get compressed down later because you'll just be coming back here doing this 10 years from now. Enhance and teacher recruitment. A lot of school divisions are doing signing bonuses now. They're doing bonuses for, uh, or either bonuses or increased salaries for folks who are teaching in hard to staff areas like math, special ed, et cetera. More attractive marketing materials to accentuate the beauty and uniqueness of our community. It is a beautiful and unique community. Our marketing materials ought to accentuate that. I'd really highlight that. Next, I would say examine all those things that cause teachers to leave school divisions and teaching altogether. And, uh, figure out what do we do to value them? Because many of the things that they point to don't really have anything to do with money. And that's important to mention that. Some things that they mentioned, they don't relate directly to money. There, there are other areas like support, for example, or being listened to. That's one of the things that I took away from getting the 26 pages of comments. They want to be, teachers want to be heard. They want to be listened to. Their, their, their opinions matter and they do. And we, but we got to keep asking, how do we support you? How do we value you? Uh, student behaviors, I would just say this, that this is, uh, I won't agree with all the bullets, but dealing with student behaviors, there, there is no silver bullet approach to dealing with student behaviors. There is no, um, one thing that's suddenly going to cause students to behave in a fashion. There's typically lots of reasons why kids misbehave. Sometimes it's because they're bored. Sometimes it's because they haven't had anything to eat. Sometimes it's because, uh, they, you know, they have to get up and get themselves ready for school that morning. Uh, there can be lots of different reasons why kids misbehave or act up in, in school. So you got to ask the why, find out why kids are misbehaving. And I can tell you this, and this is just coming from me and 36 years of experience. Stop believing that writing kids up and sending kids to the office and suspending kids and administering punitive actions against kids, that that's going to change behavior. It's not. There's very little evidence that points to those kinds of things changing student behavior. It's the same kids typically over and over and over again that administrators are dealing with. So if they're writing up and sending the office and skip to the same kids, we're going to be in front of the principal over and over and over again. So clearly, those things aren't really working for those kids. You got to figure out what does work. And so I would recommend kind of a multi-prom. Uh, there's a program called Positive Behavior Intervention and Support. I don't know if you do that here. It's very, very popular. It works very well, especially with middle school age kids. Trauma-informed instruction, just helping teachers understand some of the stuff that kids are dealing with at home that they may not have any knowledge of or understanding of. Providing parenting workshops, consistency and clarity in, um, dealing with behaviors. And parenting workshops is a tricky one. You know, I was a principal for a long time, for a long time. You know, I never had a good conversation when I was given a parent, parenting advice. Never went well, ever. Uh, but providing that kind of help in a workshop format is very different than talking to the principal. And here's what you ought to be doing. It's different if you're providing them with tools in a workshop setting to help with their parenting and dealing with their, uh, you know, their adolescent kids who are of older age. Those, they mean something. They're helpful to parents and parents typically respond to them. What they don't typically respond to is the caller, the principal's telling you how to raise your kid. That they just, that just never goes well. Never does. So, uh, those are my final tips and takeaways from the survey itself. And I will stop there and ask if you all have any questions.
Sir.
Again, um, one of the slides, I was, one of the slides had, um, unrealistic expectations. Is there anywhere you can elaborate a little bit with maybe some of their unrealistic expectations were?
Oh, gosh, that's a really good question. I mean, I can take a shot at it. I mean, unrealistic expectations have to do with, you know, um, reaching a certain benchmark in test boards or ATES. Yeah, that's all test for some other standardized test. You know, we, we do a lot of work with, um, literacy and helping kids achieve certain levels in terms of their reading ability. It's hard work. And, sir, sometimes they can't feel unrealistic. But, and, and there are others, you know, behaviors, piece, behavior pieces as well. Uh, you know, providing teachers, for example, with tools to deal with a difficult. You know, providing teachers, for example, with tools to deal with a difficult child in a classroom. Sometimes that can be overwhelming for a teacher. Like, I got to teach to those twenty kids. I don't have time to, to work with this one child who's misbehaving with a lot of energy, or, you know, exactly that, or whatever. Sometimes that can be overwhelming to a teacher, unrealistic. And then the amount of paperwork that teachers have to do is, it's really a shame. You know, truly, I'm going to get on my soapbox just for a second. Standardized testing is a really good example of, it's, it's not realistic to, for example, to administer the number of standardized tests and informative prep tests leading towards a standardized test. That's taking away instructional time. So while we can get that data and get a kind of a benchmark of where kids are, where we need to be, oftentimes for teachers, they look at, I'm losing that instructional time. So if someone's got to administer the test, someone's got to score the test, someone's got to look at the data, oftentimes that's the teacher. Not going to be overwhelming for teachers. They just want to teach. They want, they want to do what they were trained to do, which is teach kids. That can be a little bit of unrealistic expectations for a teacher.
So in your experience, thirty-six years, or is there any guidance that you could offer to your administration?
I mean, the things I mentioned, you know, I think we have very, very, very good administrators. We just do. And that's, that's highlighted in the survey data. I think that the staff development piece is one area that I don't know a lot about what we do with staff development here. I know a little bit about it. But I know the best staff development programs are the ones that are targeted, specific, and consistent. You got, for example, we are going to focus on classroom management. Because we've got a lot of new teachers, giving, this is an example. We've got a lot of new teachers, they're struggling with classroom management. So our focus this year is going to be on helping teachers become better classroom managers of students. Targeted, specific, targeted to those teachers that need it, those new teachers in particular. It's very specific, dealing with behaviors of students, and it's consistent. We're going to expect that each time there's a professional development opportunity, that's what you're going to be involved with, teacher. That's what you're going to be doing. Now, some teachers may not like that, because they want to do all the other, you know, some other things. But if the administrator sees that as a need, then that ought to be the path for that teacher. That area where they need help the most. So that, that's one example.
No questions? I have questions, and I'll fold my thoughts around it into what I'd like to say, which is thank you. Thank you, first of all, for conducting the survey. Second, I want to thank you for presenting the results in a way that I can digest. My question was around on slide eleven. The don't feel valued, your interpretation of, from my little statistical background, is one for nine, right, depending on who you ask, right? So bottom line, thank you again for the recommendation there, which ties to Mr. Taylor's question is, how do we get at, you know, shifting that particular thing? And I think we have an opportunity.
Not to be redundant, but-
See, for mid-year, I think that's an excellent perspective. At the end of the year, they're already made decisions, but mid-year is where they're struggling with significant information.
Yeah, I mentioned, this is, this is an area that it's, it's, it's important. It's been important for a long time. And I think one of the most important things we can do is let teachers teach and look at the other stuff that we're asking. And it's not just that we're asking them, it's the state's asking them. So it's the other stuff that they have to do that don't have anything to do with teaching. They just want to teach their kids. The more we can do to help with that, the better.
I apologize, but I forgot two things, guys.
Okay.
I wanted to give kudos to Child Nutrition Services. I think you've heard before what audits we're going through this year. And they just completed the federal procurement audit. And for the first time, we only had one recommendation. Previously, in twenty-one, twenty-two, we had four. And that was the best we had ever done, so we've come way down the recommendations with just one. And that was on price-cost analysis process prior to the formal bids. So we've really improved a lot in that area, and I just wanted to recognize that. And then I also would like to give you an update on the compensation study, on the new money to go to, when employees will see the money. I received the list from Special Ed Today, excuse me, listing the SSMs. And I have a partial list from HR on all the adjustments on the two-hundred-and-nine people. So that will be started to enter on their current salary effective March first, and they'll see it in their March sixteenth pay. And while payroll's entering that, HR and Sped will be working on the retro adjustment. That'll go back to July first, and that should be in the March thirty-first paycheck. Because I know that-
That'll be a big lump.
That'll be a big lump. That'll be retroactive from, well, it depends if you're ten months or twelve months. From July first or September first through February, with the differential. We're having to do it in two phases.
So did, did email go out, those folks know that?
No, I wanted to tell you all, we'll send an email.
Okay.
We just kind of met at the end of last week and tried to come up with a process. We, you know, we just didn't get it in time to get it in February twenty-eighth. And as far as retro, it's easier to do a whole month than a half of a month. So it's easier to make the new pay effective on the first of the month. That just helps ease it all the way around. So March sixteenth should be when your new pay rate is in your paycheck for that current paycheck. And March thirty-first should be when your retro pay is from the beginning of your contract. And that'll be shown as supplemental wages.
Thank you. School board member comments, Mr. Spud?
I don't, except for everybody makes a huge deal of it.
Just a couple of things. I was unable to attend the February thirteenth safety committee meeting because of a family medical situation. I did attend the audit committee, county audit committee meeting today, and I emailed those highlights. The major highlights is that there are still not any findings for the county as a whole, and just the case that there are not any findings with the auditor for FY twenty-four for Atkin County Public Schools. The last highlight I'll speak to is that the auditor today indicates that the earliest that report would be available is late March. The last indication in December was that the report would be finished by late February. I'll stop there. And then the only other thing I have is there is a recommendation from, I can't remember if it was public comment or teacher slash staff comment, but I took it to heart. An individual said that we would benefit collectively or individually from taking a Dale Carnegie class on leadership. I look at classes, and I can't afford that right now, but I did buy one of Dale Carnegie's books. I hadn't started reading it, I'm almost going to say to a fault, but I want, you know, the public to know that I did do that much. I'm going to read it.
And Ms. Handy, do you have anything she wanted to add?
Ms. Handy?
Anything or school board member comments, Ms. Handy?
No, thank you for allowing me to report to the meeting tonight. Thank you, everybody.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Spud.
Just wanted to thank Dr. Jack for doing the survey and for the very thoughtful and thorough presentation. And I'm good. Thank you.
At the next meeting, I've sent everyone an email, just, and I didn't get much response, but please consider maybe a sign-on bonus for new to the division employees, or maybe like new special ed teachers. We need to talk about that at the next meeting. TJ mentioned that he's going to these teacher recruitment fairs, and other people are offering sign-on bonuses for, for, for just being new to the division, probably licensed teachers, or part of those spots, like the special ed teachers. So if we could just think about that, and maybe that might be on the agenda at the next meeting.
Absolutely.
Mr. Taylor?
It's like I do, Stephanie has said about Dr. Jack's presentation, really appreciate it, like, thought that it's been, been a year. I think we do really need to concentrate in that area in time. Also, just want to say, everybody just be safe, coming storm, and kids are, you have them tomorrow. The next few days are bright, but just be safe.
Mr. Wright?
I just got one segment. I'd like to recognize the board supervisors, Mr. Calvin Washington in the audience. And I'm just finally glad that the board is starting to act as a board, and we're coming together to make decisions. And I just say thank you all, but let's finally get the picture of the children.
Mr. Webber?
I'll be there.
Okay. Mr. Neil?
I'm good, thank you.
Ms. Taylor? Okay. Can someone bring me the public comment sheet? Jennifer Eder. Oh, I saw, we have to read the public, the roles of public comment.
One, identify yourself by name and number one address. Two, speakers are limited to three minutes. Three, individuals may reserve or transfer their time to another speaker. Four, specific personnel matters must not be initiated at a public meeting. Five, speakers cannot be abusive, threatening, or use profanity. Six, specify the nature of your remarks. Seven, speakers who have previously spoken on a subject for public comment should not be allowed to readdress the board during the same public comment period. Eight, specific questions should be resolved prior to the meeting by contacting the superintendent or the appropriate staff member. Nine, anyone who would like to present a PowerPoint presentation for public comment has to present the presentation twenty-four hours in advance for review by the staff or Perkins. And ten, all questions should be directed to the chair, who will, at her discretion, solicit the response from the appropriate staff member.
Good evening. My name is Jennifer Eder, and I'm here to discuss an incident that occurred while I was a chaperone on February fifth at the state Beta Convention with the Endwood Middle School. My daughter had an allergic reaction to an extremely high level of chlorine and was struggling to breathe. I called nine-one-one while administering medicine to her. The paramedics evaluated her, and there was no need to transport my daughter to the hospital. So I took her back into the hotel. I messaged the supervising teacher that we didn't have to go to the emergency room, only to have her come to my room, stating that the quote, "school board" had made the decision to remove all the students assigned to my room due to safety concerns and to prevent any further trauma to these students due to my daughter's medical condition. I was shocked and upset, to say the least. I was a chaperone on the national Beta trip to Georgia last year with the same group when two students had to be evaluated and treated by EMS, while not transported to the ER, and no one was removed from their rooms. I found out the decision was made by Karen Taylor and called her the next day to discuss the event. She advised that the only information she was told was that my child was supposedly having an allergic reaction, and was probably just a panic attack, but didn't go to the ER. So she decided to pull the children from my room because she needed to prioritize their safety and prevent them from being traumatized further. My first issue is that my child was having an allergic reaction, and a non-medical person decided it was nothing more than a panic attack. My second issue is that I don't understand the school system's stance that being around my child, having a medical issue, and having it addressed and evaluated by a person who are trained for this, how it is traumatizing to other students in the same situation. And third, that I was not included in the talks that led to this decision, especially since these are the same group of students that I myself have supervised doing community service hours for Beta at the blocks involving two fire departments on my own free time. I do not understand the rationale given to me to justify the decision. And as a parent, an empty advanced certified firefighter, and a critical care registered nurse with years of extensive experience in this field, I want to know why my child was treated differently in this instance than other children in the school system over the years. I've asked around, and I've found that there's no other instances that anyone can come up with that equate to this, that occurred to my child. I'm looking for the school boards to obtain a written response to this question. This is now your policy for a child having a medical issue on a school-sponsored overnight trip, because a precedent has been set by Ms. Taylor. Thank you, three times.
We'll have someone follow up.
Thank you.
Someone from the central office. And I'm just, Bill, I have to say this. We, the school board, we don't, we don't work full-time at the school. We're just elected, and we gather twice a month. But people use, they refer to us in, in the central office. They interchange those terms, but we're two different sets of people. We will definitely have someone, thank you for sharing that. We'll definitely have someone follow up and, and talk with you.
Thank you.
Ms. Burford?
Good evening. Connie Burford, April two eighth, Beaverton, Virginia. Just have a couple of things. One of them is for Ms. Handy, if she can still hear me. Kamisha? Oh, you can hear me? Good. Ms. Handy brought up a couple of meetings ago that she would like to be made aware if there were other groups going on trips, and so that you all could evaluate if you were going to contribute to those trips. NGA, the Model General Assembly, will be going on a trip. And I understand it's quite hefty fees that they're going to have to pay. If you all would like to consider helping them with that, I would like to bring that to your attention. The other thing that I would like to bring to your attention, I understood Mr. Webbers' conversation with Dr. Jack. The field trip fees for elementary schools, they have quite, you know, I don't think any of our elementary schools should have to pay a hefty bus fee just to go to a local field trip. Going to NASA, going to the beach, going to Salisbury Zoo, where they don't have to pay to get in, but they still have to pay. You know, if we're going to pay for travel, for clubs or whatever, we should be able to provide a bus for these kids to go on field trips. And I think that's a big concern for me, and I'm pretty sure it is. And if, you know, if Mr. Patterson has figured out how to do it up at Pomontag, I think we can figure out how to do it at the rest of our, our elementary schools. Thank you.
Yvonne Knoll?
Good evening, everyone. I want to first say that I appreciate the work that all of you do. I may not agree with everything, because none of us ever agree with everything of everybody anyway. And you are giving your time, and I pray often that you're considering the seriousness of what you're doing. I, Mr. Webber, by the way, pronounced it. I understand the fee thing. I'm like Connie Burford. A first grader shouldn't have to pay to go on a field trip. But I do understand student fees for nine years, for four years of high school. And my thing is, I may be antiquated in what I'm saying, but I was a parent and grandparent. And these children, young people, the children, as long as they are, then I will start child. These children can do almost anything they want to do. And to, to take away all fees is not right, I don't think. Because have you ever noticed how much a parent spends for a child to go to the prom? They spend anywhere from two-hundred-and-fifty to a thousand dollars. And they can't pay eighty or a hundred dollars for their high school graduation fee? Ridiculous. So that's my comment from that tonight. My question, again, my other question, my question is, how are we doing with filling the vacancy for the superintendent? I've checked the blogs. I would like to have some kind of a response. How are we coming along with that? The other thing is, the salaries that were talked about, not the last meeting, but the meeting before, I couldn't attend the last meeting, but the meeting before, there was so much going backwards and forwards, I don't know who was going to get what. But are any of those salaries being increases being implemented, especially for the cafeteria workers, the janitors, and the school bus drivers? That's the bottom of the poll. And this board, then you know, I've mentioned it before, we're guilty of giving a dollar and taking it back. So we're going to give people raises, give them a raise. We're going to give them something, give them something. They work hard, too. And anybody who gets on a bus and travels with some of these children and their behavior, they deserve all they get. And anybody who gets on a bus and travels with some of these children and their behavior, they deserve all they get. That's what my child to your child. And the classroom, the teachers, I, I, I have suffered it for teachers sometimes because we don't teach as parents, I say we because I'm a parent, we don't teach our children to behave. And that's where it starts. You can, you can take them, you can send them to the office all you want to, but if they're not taught at home, I can say this because I'm a parent more so than you can say this, but if I don't teach my child at home, my child is going to get a failure in many things, in many things. But my, one of my main concern is about the salary increases for those people who are getting the least. Thank you very much.
It's not, I'll just, very quick, I'll just tell you that the superintendent search ends at the end of this month and then we will review the applications and go forward from there. And at the last meeting, I believe we did, it was at the last meeting that we approved the the new starting pay for people entry-level positions went from thirteen, thirteen to fifteen dollars an hour. That's what Ms. Unley was updating us about. And that new pay will start on March sixteenth and then they'll, it was retroactive. It's all, we made it retroactive, so on the thirty-first of March, there'll be a big lump sum that goes all the way back to the ball.
Now, did that include those people whom I mentioned?
Yes, yes, yes. Do you still need a?
What? Didn't include whom? Didn't include the bus drivers?
No, because the bus drivers were part of the, the bus drivers were part of the compensation study in the ball. The bus drivers received a raise in the ball.
Raise that they were given that was not taken back?
No. Nobody's taking it back. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Chris Cartwright?
Chris Cartwright, two forty twenty East Point Road in Hancock, Virginia. I'd like to transfer my time to Catherine Fowle.
Okay, thank you. Next up, I have Erin Hudson.
Erin Hudson, one four zero zero four Stone Pond Lane, Bell Haven. I'd also like to transfer, transfer my time to Katie Fowle.
Well, we, only one person can transfer their time. So maximum the amount that any one person can speak is six minutes. Mr. Taylor read that in our rules. So thank you. Is there anything else? Okay, thank you. Marion, Marion Cornwell?
Can we go out of order? Can I speak and then that will give them a chance to use their own minutes? I'm just asking.
Mary, Mary, are you Marion?
Yes, I'm Mary Cornwell, two seven four one nine, Whitetail Road, Melville, Virginia. I was going to do the same thing, so.
You were going to yield your time. Okay, so next up is Catherine. We have six minutes.
All right, hello, my name is Catherine Fowle and I live at fourteen-two-nine-zero, Ridge Road in Bloxham. I'm here today as a concerned educator and citizen. I have served students with severe learning needs within AcuMat County Public Schools since two thousand, since twenty-twenty. I started my teaching career in nineteen-eighty-nine. This is my talent and my passion, teaching students to learn how they were designed to learn, no matter their challenges. And I want to be able to continue to do this for students and their families. However, I face some barriers. Looking at, within our school system, I believe that there is discrimination. And I believe that I have been a victim of systematic targeted discrimination. I've sent materials to provide some insight to you, but I'm here asking from this, I know you said no personnel, but I do want to express that there's, tell me if I've gone off into that and then I'll correct it, okay? Thank you.
Can you just maybe stay away from people's names?
Oh, correct. Did I use a name?
Use titles.
Use titles. Well, wait, is that my whole time? Wait, okay. From the start of the school year, I encountered opposition from staff in my classroom and repeatedly asked the administration for help. The principal instructed me to reach out to her if I had difficulty with staff cooperation. There were witnesses to staff's insubordination, including the school administrator, a teacher mentor from the central office, and an OT assigned to my class. The OT and I even reported concern about bullying from the staff to the principal. Bullying me, okay. My job has been put at risk because of alleged allegations made by SSMs and instructional assistants from my classroom. Regardless of whether I retain my job or am dismissed, my primary concern remains the learning and safety of my students. I urge the school board to consider hiring outside experts to review the practices of AcuMat County Public Schools' self-contained classrooms. The challenges in my classroom arose because I was setting high expectations, implementing new routines, and aligning my teaching, and, is it still going?
Yes.
All right, and aligning my teaching with legal requirements for serving students with severe disabilities. I firmly believe that all students can learn. However, the response from my staff was resistance, coming with comments such as, "Why bother if they can't learn?" One of the main challenges I faced with SSMs and instructional systems was their reluctance to follow my directives, often justifying their reaction by claiming the students were incapable. This mindset is harmful to students and their families. With proper support, these students can achieve. As a specially-trained teacher with the adaptive curriculum endorsement, which I don't think there are very many of us in this county that have that, therefore, they, I understand how to safely support students with complex medical needs, including those with shunts and feeding tubes. The staff falsely accused me of not following protocols, protocols that they created based on their comfort level rather than actual documented requirements for these students. I have a strong track record and I have many parents here to back that up. I have a strong track record of success with students of all abilities, but I need a team that is committed to student growth rather than personal agendas. The behavior of staff suggests that their choices were not made in the best interest of student safety. For example, my classroom is about learning, not babysitting. I encourage my staff to engage with students rather than talk over them or around them. I ask them to model enthusiasm in lessons instead of sitting idling. I insist they use the individualized communication system designed by the speech pathologist to me, yet they're resisting. Isn't that the speech therapist's job? Or the student doesn't like using it. For these programs to succeed, the entire team must support the learning process. I also expected staff to follow the physical therapist's recommendation, encouraging the students in wheelchairs to, that they had time, excuse me, out of their chairs, in specialized equipment. Frequently, as the PT recommended, the resistance I encouraged was unacceptable. For example, one of the staff members refused to place the student in the big blue chair because they anticipated the student would have a messy pull-up while seated. However, the student has a right to stretch and experience comfort outside their wheelchair, even if a diaper change is required. Hearing for these students means prioritizing their well-being, not staff convenience. Effective teaching and caregiving require effort, focus, and commitment to growth. That is our role. We are not babysitting service. However, I have been falsely accused, I've also been falsely accused by the SSMs and instructional assistants of my class of physically aggressive, being physically aggressive toward a student. This is absolutely did not happen. My concern is that the behaviors described in these allegations were truly atrocious. If their claims were true, then the school system should be held accountable for its response, particularly given its stated commitment to student safety. The staff who made these allegations, along with the administration that accepted their version of the debts, did not act in a way to prioritize student safety. They left the student in the classroom while they went to the office to report their claims. The student administrator did not check on the student or move the staff member they choose such as me, which would have been the appropriate protocol. If their allegations had been credible. Even more concerning, the nurse was not involved at all. There was no evaluation of the student. No incident report was written and the parents were not contacted. Instead of prioritizing the student's well-being, the school administrator asked the staff to write their testimonies with time to collaborate and then sent them to HR who subsequently contacted DSS.
Can I finish if I have this interruption? I'm almost there. Parents are not informed of the allegations until DSS reached out to them. This response.
I think we're good.
All right. I asked the school board, is there?
Do it now. Thank you, thank you. We allow you six minutes. And you said some information already. I think we're good. Thank you. Liliana Velazquez?
Yes, hi, everyone. My name is, my name is Liliana Velazquez. I live on fifty-two-four-two Brooks Lane in Faintail, Virginia. And I'm here to share, to share my experience with Mrs. Fowle. As my, I've been living with my daughter with special needs in East End Shore for seventeen years. And I, and through that time, Eliana, my daughter's name is Eliana, had several homebound teachers. Those other teachers never measured to the standards as Mrs. Fowle did. The first time I met Mrs. Fowle, I liked her attitude, her personality. She was so happy to meet Eliana and excited to start teaching her right away. In every session, I could see her passion, dedication, energy, enthusiasm, and love for what she does. She will come to her three times a week and she'll never had a negative attitude towards my daughter and/or the nurses. She set calls for Eliana to meet every four to five months before the school year was over. Eliana was able to identify family members when showing her pictures. She learned how to communicate with us by pressing and advice that Mrs. Fowle provided her through the school. She also had more movement and strain on her left arm. Overall, we noticed great improvement in my daughter when Mrs. Fowle was teaching her. Now, since she, the new year started, Eliana has not had another teacher or homebound services. I'm here because Mrs. Fowle was a great teacher with her and she made a great impact in our lives. And all the teachers that she had before, we, they would just come and stay and read to Eliana and Eliana would fall asleep. And even us. And I really appreciate everything that she does. Thank you.
Angelica Guerrero?
Hello, everyone. I'm nervous, sorry. My name is Angelica Guerrero. I live in two-five-two-six-one Dennis Drive, Parksville. Basically, I'm Eliana's nurse. I work, I've been working with her for four years. We noticed, when Ms. Fowle came and worked with her, we noticed a big difference. I just want you guys to take that in consideration. Ms. Fowle is a good person. She taught her how to do different things where before, none of other teachers had. I'm really upset that she's in this situation and I'm vicious that some people in the AcuMat County Schools are not willing or not ready for change. And she's bringing another perspective for special needs kids, not to treat them as their babies. They can, she sees their potential and that they can do better and improve. So please consider that and we want her back. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Jimmy Lane?
Jimmy Lane, two-four-four-three-five Adelaide Street, Parksville. I'm coming, I'm coming on behalf of Katie as well. I've actually seen her in high school when she worked at Nando High. She is very passionate about what she does. She's very, she even got on me one time. I mother-hand everyone. I mean, that's part of me, that's who I am. But she said, you know, let them try, let them do for themselves, let them get their own food, whatever. She was starting to implement the little tablets where they can choose their own food. The nonverbal children can actually point to whatever they were wanting on the serving line. They couldn't tell us, so she was encouraging them to point. She was encouraging them to put their numbers in. Now they're heard like cattle, through our line. They get whatever the person puts on their tray. They're no longer given choices. They quickly moved through there. Katie took that time with those children. Yes, I'm an outsider, but I feel like I did get to see some things that maybe you all don't get to see. Yes, Katie, and I don't know if you all know this, but Katie also battles with autism. And, you know, we're in a society today where we're supposed to, you know, be inclusive and we're supposed to not discriminate. But here's a prime example. You know, people didn't like her, so she kind of got shunned. And I literally heard in the line from people that worked under her nasty comments made about her. And, you know, that's just plain back, it's bullying. So thank you for your time and I hope you all will consider keeping her. She is phenomenal and she does care about those kids.
Thank you.
Are we able to speak if we're not on the reporter?
Uh, did you want?
If, if that's acceptable.
Every three minutes.
I was also unable to sign the.
Alex Hargis, one-four-three-eight-four Shields Bridge Road in Bell Haven. Good evening, everyone. Good to see you again. So I likewise am here in advocacy of Katie. I have witnessed firsthand Katie's heart for the students of, for the special education students in AcuMat County. I have personally witnessed her shed tears over these students and I've seen her heart. This isn't somebody who's collecting paychecks or is here for a job. You could pay her probably half and she'd still want to do it because it's purpose and calling and meaning for her. It is evident to me that Katie has endeavored to be an immense advocate for students with disabilities. For her, this means not accepting the status quo of their current set of limitations, but rather carefully, deliberately, and rather methodically encouraging them to transcend their current set of limitations. Now, this might not always fall within the letter of the law, but I want to encourage the board to look at the spirit of the law. And when I say law, I mean protocols or policies here. Sometimes, see, special education doesn't always get to exist within the context of black and white. Some things are more nuanced. Sometimes you get the fork for the student. Sometimes you let them get the fork themselves because you believe they can do it here. They can do it and will encourage agency and empowerment. It's not always black and white. Sometimes it's nuanced. No special education student is the same as another. It's case by case and you treat each student according to their particularities. And so Katie sees that. Katie sees that nuance and she pushes constantly for the students to, to improve in the quality of life and, and their dignity and being able to have self-empowerment. And that doesn't always fall within the standards of people's expectations. Oh, you can't, they can't get this themselves because usually this happens, this negative thing happens, or we don't want us, we don't want this to happen. And, and Katie has the insight of experience to say, no, I've seen it myself. They can do this. They can do this themselves. Trust me. If we graduate them little by little, they can get there. And so in my observation, there are two types of teachers, not teachers, sorry. There's, there's two types of roles that people can fall into in, in this kind of special education role. There's one that operates more as a nanny, as a babysitter, so that mom and dad can drop them off and, you know, just take care of my kid and make sure they're fed and that, that's not what Katie is. Katie is going to seek to dignify the special, special education student by empowering them with improved agency, aiding them in transcending their current set of limitations to ultimately live a better life. So I just wanted to put my word in support of her. Thank you.
Hello, everybody. My name is Benito Verro Melo, two-oh-five-oh-one Police Street in Colley, Virginia. I am also here on behalf and on advocacy of Ms. Fowle. This is near and dear to my heart because my niece was actually one of her students. And in the short amount of time that she was in Ms. Fowle's class, and in the short amount of time that she was in Ms. Fowle's class, we saw great improvement in her more speech, her wanting to communicate more with us. My niece is pretty much nonverbal, and it's very difficult for her to communicate. So I'm not going to say anything that hasn't already been said. I have firsthand also witnessed nasty comments or even looks from grown adults in positions of power from the administration at the elementary school. I'd like to outline the mission and vision of the AcuMat County Public Schools, which say, "Providing a safe, engaging, student-centered environment where all learners are challenged, encouraged, and supported to maximize growth and be prepared for future education, citizenship, and work." And then the vision, AcuMat County Public Schools will be a community of diverse learners where all members are valued, challenged, and expected to grow. I recently went to my niece's class, and when I walked in the classroom, I saw the teachers or helpers, I'm not quite familiar with them yet because of the change, on their phones, sitting down, not challenging or engaging the students. And I could probably with one hundred percent certainty say that had I gone in there when Ms. Fowle was teaching them, she would have been sitting down and engaging with the students. And it's just disheartening to see the outcome that has come because she has wanted to implement that change. She has wanted to push those students because she believes in their growth. She believes in them being able to grow no matter their limitations. So, just again, on behalf of Ms. Fowle, I saw great improvement in my niece, and it's just very disheartening to see what has come of it since then. So that is all.
Thank you. The board will now adjourn to closed meeting.
Yes.
The move to school board to be in a closed meeting for the purpose of litigation and legal matters, subdivision eight point seven, subsection two point two, thirty-seven eleven, the Code of Virginia.
Sorry. There is a motion, and second, go into closed session, all in papers?
Aye.
Opposed. We're in closed session. Please, please favor it.